Mr. Rutter.
Lordy Mayor from Waste Man.
Mr. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and your counsel. First off, I want to start by apologizing. I know I was on your agenda at the last meeting in November and I did not show up. Of course, the market changed meetings, they don't... Not just... She did not, it's my fault, I made a mistake. But tonight I'm forwarding with a new contract. It's up for renewal and I presented it. I think your attorneys had nothing to look at it, I know the mayor has, all of you have. And basically, we've had the contract, Waste Man has had a contract from Mossaw about 20 years or more. But it started out as a contract and it became a one-way amendment to approve it. The sort of guy I'm paying. And then what we did is to utilize the one that we adopted earlier this year for Washington County. A big change is in this contract from what you currently have. Now people have three community cleanups a year and no charge. We provide the dumpsters for that cleanup. And I'll get to it this morning, the cost and schedule, we'll have it down here. A new service in this is a cost side door backdoor service. If you have another person, a disabled person in the community and they got the patient and I have a... One more, I can get in this morning. And they fill it out, it's very simple. And the city signs off on it. It could be ours or their whoever can let us know we have our guys or gals that services. But we use the side doors when we work down here. The lady will come out and they will go to the door and pick it up. They will pick it up and up. And it's just something we do. It's in the jar where the contract begins, it's not your contract. So that's one thing we put in here. I think the other thing here is the CPI was CPI E D. We looked at CPI W S T, which was what she was trash center, what she did with your work. You have a little bit of a rate increase every year and that's why we're looking for them to replace them. And it works in October, first of each year, not this month. And this time we go to January. The next time you would be up for consideration of a rate decrease or a decrease would be January 1st, 2019. It would be over here. And I think the other thing that I remember, the attorneys probably love this, they had to comment on it, but it was something that Judge Goodman, he's the county attorney for Washington County, but if we mess up and it's our fault and somebody assumes Mossaw, you often hire your attorney and we'll take it. It's our responsibility. And I think those are the real highlights. No rate increase, no rate change from what you have now, like stuck in 66?
Yes.
Okay. So I think that's something. Hire you, hire you. That's pretty much what I'm aiming for the high end of Mossaw. And I'll answer any questions or if I can't answer any questions. I have five return, I don't know if I said it.
Hey, is there any questions from the, uh, Mr. Attorney, that you need to pay for this? Do you?
I would be agree with everything and your indemnification is, that's really a good thing for the city.
Any questions from the council? Uh, you know, I mean, your things and nobody likes to work on themselves. Maybe just a little bit here, do I just run that into your attention, away from here?
Oh, yes.
There's some typos, maybe some insist on format, some things like that. I can bring that up to you.
Yeah, please.
We do the sign front. And I see that the one that's in here looks just like the one that I reviewed and there's just some stripe groups. I know we have those.
I have one that's on computer.
Go ahead. I would like to do this. For the sake of time with the council, I could give you these and notice that you might need them.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I want to quite deal with this question here. It looks like, uh, some type of new, like a little quicker word in our class or... It just... The only one of any consistency is that I have a question for the number 23, maybe number 22A. But, uh, we talked about, we talked about some contact and then it looks like that should be another sentence, 22, then we know we can lay down. But everything else is just, is typo. So with your permission, I would just open it to the mayor, backwards and see if that's... But that's an exception, I think. All right, it's time for us to look at our, or to meet with our department agents and Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, did you take action on it or was it approved?
Well, thank you for interrupting.
We did get a vote and you can ask you that.
Sure. Okay. If there's no, if there's no questions from the council, sure, when it's time to motion to approve the contract and the vice mayor to sign. We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. How you feel it's wrong?
Yes.
It's hard.
Yes.
And... And it was that, thank you.
Same wrong. There you go.
Fine. There we go. Thank you for that.
All right. So I really don't have much on my agenda, but I was, we did the football ball games. I wonder if you heard of those in the street market. It was very nice. We had at least 15 to 20 people come out. One time I even asked everybody to bring a hand unit so we could give back to the community. I even, to the library this season, we can't really talk to people, I wish I had a hand unit. We had a nice little rock for games and so we gave back to the library. We had our summer tree, those things that got us there and it's been beautiful down there. And Mr. Carter said, we didn't have very good democracy, I wanted. It was okay.
I don't lose a ring.
I do, I would like to get a banner for this baseball season that just advertises our sign up so that we can, you know, get that under the banner last year. They could smack that right out from the elementary school. Unfortunately, we don't remember it, but maybe we could put it right there at the caution line so that everybody that comes in through Mossaw will see the banner that says, you know, baseball signups and they know that we do have our baseball team back there. I haven't gotten a price on a banner, but I don't believe it should be $100. There's as long as a table, but I mean, it's something large enough where a partner shot by, they can say, you know, is that, yeah, baseball signups or Coach Hill or, you know, whatever it may be. So we can get more kids out and more people out to help us. Well, I've heard that Pepsi and stuff like that used to give you one free as long as you advertised your thing on the topic. I had a really, I actually looked into it, I was just thinking about my layer right here. Do you know where it's at? You need a way out of the newspaper on your... Yeah, we did a little paper. I knew where they put it on the sign a couple times out there to, to partner sign. And then last year I sent it to the elementary school and put it in their news letter and then we did that. All the kids.
Is it like, is it a banner that you can, uh, if you're hoping they'll be listening, you can just, you want to know how you can put the base for it? Do you have those bases that we used to use to do that banner? We used to be a...
We did, I haven't thought about that, but I mean, we don't really necessarily have to put dates on there to say, baseball signups opens, go to the city hall or...
Yeah, man to man, they'll...
Yeah, we use it, yeah, yeah. But... All right, any questions? Yes, then we'll have the hayride tomorrow night. We'll meet here at the city hall and let everybody wrap up, load it up on the hayride. We'll ride around with the Christmas lights and we'll come back here for refreshments. I'll try to put a case for these. All right, I'll get set.
I'm doing a great job.
Thank you.
You're on me. Your banner.
And I did, I tried to ask some kids in the community about that festival, but there wasn't that many interests that I could find unless like we advertised it wider than Mossaw. But, yeah, and they do have that. And a little boy over there bothered us while he was there about that, so I was asking, he was like, black leg or chipleg? I was like, oh, sorry.
And we're, and we can't have everything in the first year.
Right, yeah.
So it's something that we can keep working on and improving. Is, is that matter from the, you need most of them to be all... If you need a banner, you can get something, any objection to the council on the banner presentation? Any, any member of the council have a question for our recreation director? Let's not help him, I have one thing. I think we talked about this maybe the last hundred few years.
Yes, sir.
The development that is scheduled for land now. I didn't know about the crunk of prison in Alabama state. But the football and the hayride. I didn't know about either one of them until, uh, I think when the sign, they do pull down the football and down the hayride. I didn't know that that this week, uh, from then.
Yeah.
And the reason I would like to know, I think the council might provide to know and always hear through the liaison.
Yes.
But if somebody comes and, "Hey, Mayor, why don't I put the ball?" I say, "You want it?" They say, "What do we catch the hayride at?" I say, "What hayride?"
Right.
So if you, if you would let it, let it.
Yeah, and I did, I did. Yeah. I did, I did text or speak to Carter about the football and the hayride.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm glad that you had, I heard the football, you had parents.
I did, I had quite a few parents and it was a lot of fun. I'm glad we did not record any of it because I failed. It was a tragedy.
Yeah.
Very much I couldn't record it. But, yeah, it was a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun, y'all being the tournament, seeing them out and playing, it's totally good. I'd like to do it once a month, I know it's getting a little cold, but make it up for our tournament a little bit. I'll come out and play, it's a little walk.
Oh, before we see you again in this room, Matt, there'll be, there'll be baseball.
Okay.
And we, we're ready to lay up.
Um, I'm getting ready, I have to get back out there to the shed and do another inventory because I've not been out there and disposed of the things that you told me I could before. And then starting inventory of what I need for my concession stand, but yes, in the next couple months I will get home that, within the next couple weeks, come to you. Yep, and then I just spoke to Tony yesterday, or actually today at school, and he said that after the holidays we're gonna get the Easter hoppings there. Some of their property and getting that filled, put out.
And it's not, it's not, and all of us, it's not, it's not, she didn't, she's not coaching.
Absolutely.
I mean, a year ago, we almost could be the thing that was getting the...
Yeah, I mean, actually, the first of the year, I used to start with baseball signups and looking for pitches and umpires and concession stands, I should anyway. Unfortunately, last year I ran a concession stand, I hired them by myself, I knew and all that there. So anybody that wants to help out with umpiring, concession stands, any...
What happens?
Normally, Chipley does our scheduling, but they're normally on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays nights. We never do Wednesday nights or Fridays, unless it's make up game and we'll do... And there is a class that will be held, we should, we normally know the shit. Yeah, that you can learn all the rules and there's a, umpire, there's a small pay, but, yeah, I mean...
I wonder how you know what's going to come with COVID and if you need to...
Um, he said he is, he's coming here tomorrow night to help with the hayride and to help me get my... He said, you guys, other than that, I really don't know anybody in this area that can see what I've done.
Anybody else in the council have a question for? I don't have that, everybody could say that. And I'd rather be on my business.
I'm just, I think I've actually been here, I don't have any, they, they used to be called that.
We said, we said two or three hundred and we shot home from them.
I did the first draft of it and I was, I did find out that some of that stuff did not belong to the city. It belonged to the town hall. Not a lot of that, I mean, it was like a sprinkler, a hood, it was a rake and just things like that. So I have to take that stuff off of the list because it does not take them along to the...
What you said, the list is...
Even, yes, and there was some umpire here that was no longer in, whether it was driver on it or had holes or it was just 20 years old. So that's what we do, that's our... No, we have, all of our umpires, we have completed, that's a lot, 40, 50. And we've not had more than 14 yet. I mean, if we, let's get another one, I might even understand, but as long as we're...
I think some of what happened, the places we didn't dispose.
Exactly.
Yeah, we gave it some, yes, we had to take it off the field and identify that.
And so at the next meeting, I'll have you revise.
I told you if you look at it like... Mr. Hurd, as a liaison, that's what I had to hear.
Thank you. Very nice, very good listening.
If you have a agenda following with us, our next, uh, for his, our team and just part of the meeting, dispatch called into a structure bar, we have a nice, we skip.
She ain't...
My first one on the board, she might.
Oh, that water tank project is still running away. Ready for a little winter, just like a wonder, that's it all, properly, it's, it's no water break.
And it's been, it's been a good time out. Remember that this is a military, that's our, our services, you can't just die. Like, maybe yesterday, buddy, plenty, a couple days ago, I saw it, a lot of digging. Yeah, so, uh, Hazel, she was a student, I believe she was. I saw it, I saw it on, yeah. She, she was, I met her in New Orleans and I had it, if any of you in the conference, Mr. Morrison, just make a question.
Yeah, thank you.
And we...
Thank you, sir. Thanks for the good will, bringing it to the holidays, all the rest of the people.
I bet you did a few days ago, every time I saw you, you were complaining about how hot you were.
It's very...
If that did take care of it.
Have to take care of it.
Okay. From the, from the council, is there anyone who has a question for Mr. Hurd?
How are you coming home getting your clock and your, that we talked about? We had a little, we had a little...
I did tell the work order thing there, there. And just, you were, you were over the work together, I hit you at four o'clock, planned up two days ago. Thanks now that you're getting beat, serving my couple of plans out for Christmas evening. I guess, just kind of, kind of wondering what a report or something like that.
We're busy right now with the holidays and fringes and stuff like that. Well, we're buying it, we're doing some more lives.
When I read it, our life council, there was some, there was some conversation about, uh, people, lots of trips to town and things like that. And all that mixed up, so that we're not making, making, making trips.
I plan one trip a week. If I have to go to the Dallas, not in my business.
Excuse me. I mean, saying you were talking to the tour, talking to your lab.
The right, the levels in rights, they're all put last minute, right back with. We're waiting on the interviews with their test and that they have to do this for us and with the experiment. They gotta, they gotta raise the plane or write it as a public statement. We're waiting on interviews. And they were doing the last of their tests and this week, if I'm understanding right. And we should have a fourth of them sent.
And another thing, another thing that's starting to sound a little bit too, our batteries are going in and our meters, we have to go out to send some more and change them out. Like 130 has to be hammered, then you let it go from one after the other. Some meters, some there, it's falling out. That's sort of a little confusing operation, so we wait on this.
I haven't been reading that many about 39 meters anymore.
Well, back to it. There's a little bit of wire in there, so they can just get out of there, one, two, three, four, five, three, two over here, three over there, so.
And our, our, our security cameras or, or...
Yes, sir.
Coming business and they have, they have your force. You have the top line, we get it. Do you think that you need to ask those or tell us or something? It's not only the council that you need.
Does everybody have a blueprint?
To help with or trying to make it go better or easier.
Nothing, it's just, just down all together, it's clear.
We appreciate our, we appreciate our employees and the job that you do and we want to follow you, Mr. Jackson, and she's not here, but we let you know as well and you, if you need us, please don't, don't, one of that time, come to market, come to your liaison and we'll, we'll stick what we can because you are, you are our, you keep us going. Okay? Thank you. Deviate a little just a bit from the agenda. You recall several months ago, we had, we made the team court and we had a number of, of young people who had made some, made some mistakes in our town and it took us to, to solve that and to move on from there. I have a second letter that said, "I would like to take this opportunity to apologize for what happened." And I'm writing this letter to you all, recall, I know how badly my actions affected the town of Mossaw. I want you to understand how sorry I am for what I have done. The justice system has made sure that I have been punished and that I am truly sorry. Even though there is no justification in my actions, I was blinded by peer pressure. If I could take it back, I would. Please know that I will always regret what I did. I have no further regrets than the trouble I have caused in my own town. And I'm very sorry for damaging, for damaging the law on the concession stand. I know the town, the Mossaw, they tried and awesome haters and I had no right to try and break in. I can promise you that this will never happen again. I know that what I have done was horribly inappropriate, disrespectful and wildly selfish. I take full responsibility for my actions and I'm truly sorry for what I did. I can't expect your forgiveness, but I certainly hope for you. I would like to earn your trust in me. This experience has taught me to consider the consequences and refrain from impulsive actions. I was embarrassed and I have learned that nobody, I have learned that, uh, nobody appreciates my poor judgment. In the future, I have, I have every, probably my conversation, I'm learning to adjust my behavior befitting the situation I'm in. Once again, I am truly sorry for what I have done. I know that consequences for decisions to affect your internal life and I am truly sorry. And you forgive me, of course, these are due to miles and this one is unsigned, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't rip the name. And I will tell you the grammar and the, and the words known right there. But he, he, he thought the future is arrived. That's the case, maybe. That was a very, very, very nicely worded letter. And this would go, this would go back to you for the record for the band of things you have.
I think in your profile.
Okay? Yes, sir.
The first letter we received from the first time, just to give you a little bit of update. Mission, P A G has been approving in the hall, in school. They still have a little setback every once in a while, but not near as bad. And within another couple of months, we'll complete the whole team court system. But I seen great strides, things with big eye opener and I'm glad to see we have something like team four that would be one of the new making states because the longevity of this, I guess, our consequences from this was a lot stronger than I realized. And it destroyed their lives, for the rest of their lives. I must actually work in this, this new person, see the turnaround. I'm bringing all the...
I remember the folder, this is two letters we...
We're great, you're not one more, you're one last one more. We'll get another letter in the next couple of months.
Okay? All right. All right, we're down to the number of gendered items and we're gonna shake the table of items. Part-time position.
This is table for last month and the only time it was table for last month, it was table in the january until y'all checked it off.
Is there any discussion on the table of items, the part-time position, any discussion on that tonight?
If we give it to a part-time person, follow their wishes, follow their duties as possible, a little speed of just... But first off, myself, I have to do that for that reason.
Are you asking me or just...
I'm just asking.
Okay.
You know that.
Well, I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you my opinion, just, I think if we are talking about a part-time person in the office that they need to be there, we're planning to let it full time. I want, we're talking about part-time outside. I think if there's any responsibilities we might need to curtail, the bill file would be banking and some things like that. There may be some things that need to be, uh, worked into, but I think that would be able to do. The scheduling would be up to us. I think, I think that if we're talking again about inside of it, I think it gets us that fine, ladies hopefully.
Set your...
Saturday, these hours, so that Friday, city hall, so that Friday. I don't know how it happened.
Well, I'm just, just using the dogs for example.
I've got, I've got murder phone and I've been out of, and I have a... I don't have that. More than had a girl, just not well at all and as a matter of fact, uh, it's six in the morning. And she is, um, probably appear to be hurt for it. No thanks, they came in and placed a tetchy diggers from the emergency, she's been out. If she can schedule, if she can skit, the time to back me up on Friday, if she can schedule for her daughter to come inside, then she's already off, she's not at her office. There'd be some things like that. Also, if she had to leave in an emergency, uh, our community, our community, we got a little bit of a gap sometime, come down here, nurse at the door, be back soon, or some kind of emergency in the door. So I think the second person would have that. I think, I think the third thing would be, anything that's just one of these, if something happens that one. We, we used to counsel, we, 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 we don't want to speak for our attorney or our auditor, the public, we don't need to be behind that counter to do anything. Though she would be the closest thing we have about knowing how to either hook you to do it. So a second person, uh, as opposed to sales to have that position, we might find somebody that lifted one of the motor versions, things like that and we could help, we could get that out of my labor system, so that's in here, we need to, we may need to have a backup person. So that's, that's, that's maybe my thought on if you, what would an hour be, that'd be up for us? What would they do, that also be up for us? But I think that if we entertain that and actually not like to do shit with dog scripts, we may need to look at, we have all the, we have all the market desk and answer book, we never call them market, unless we do an individual that's come by, come in and look at her dog script, she's gonna see us, as over the years it changes that we're going through, if we ask the integrity and then her dog script, or if she just assumed it, also had to be done. I'm, it is, and there's a lot of things, and if you just, if you just do, it's not even going. That's my thing, I said. Mr. Hurd, you done reflecting on that?
I'm gonna start out with a question. What is, what do you have? Her name is Franklin Spade. They're in, it's been working this company. If we weren't the hire, I'm listening, he was questioning the hire. If we were to hire somebody in their part-time, of course, I think she probably had a great option or something like that, didn't it?
We are obligated to the program if we have a decision and she's qualified to operate, to, and we can do that without, you know, for, 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 not, not too hard for the program. What about other people on the community, you want the job, be up here?
Well, when we, when we, in that, we said that if this person trained, that in the mercy of God and all that, if we didn't even unsubsidize them for it, which they're subsidy and this and that job, that that person would get the first option at the job. Other than that, I agree with you, we got to advertise.
My second question is, do you think she could actively serve the city or the town of Wausau in your absence?
She does nap and I'm out. She very good with the public. There's a, as a training position, you know, we're trying, but we're not, you know, we don't have the discipline that we, for secret, if we would have it if she wasn't employed at the town, you know, based on the NCBA program, has that authority, you know? And we can take our complaints to them, but she runs the office when I'm not here, you know?
It's kind of a little pushy, isn't it?
What, what are some things she does when you're out?
She, uh, she, she presses the water bills, she does a lot of the work on the water bills when I'm here. Um, she, um, you know, following, you know, she has not done any things yet, uh, just because this party was not able to stop the pain, you know, I feel like, you know, if she's employed at the town, she would be bonded, just like I, you know, something happen or anything that, but until she's employed at the town, she's not bonded, it's fine, so she's not being it. But the water bill, the water system, she knows it, bring it, uh, she deal with the, the public real good.
Well, just like I was saying, you said about the dog situation we had here a couple of months ago, if him were out and Jimbo or somebody called up, also have the normal, normal, such as, does she know the people of the city well enough to know what you're talking about?
Yes, she does. I would like to hear it.
I, I think we're, and, and I, I didn't expect you to do that, but I thought, uh, we was talking about, but I'm maybe, we're here because we're gonna get you something, brother. Uh, I think that, uh, even if we're only getting off of her, I think we should have a, move an interview session with her, with all of us, because I, I think that all of us may have some questions, uh, I do know, I expect, I expect whoever would be a clean person and everybody, nobody needs to say, well, that's not what I do, that's not for my job. If, if they got the job, give, give everything for your job, that's not me.
Well, mine too, I was just talking about, if we get part-time help, that they're trained in every area.
I would too. I agree with you.
Not just few things catching the ball and posting water bills and just, just to get by, but they would know every area that goes on every day.
Put that last line, every application ever, feel about being a job as new.
That's on my job description, I mean, well, we got, I feel, he says, uh...
You don't want to get put through the pool because of such a thing.
Well, it's like a thing, she didn't, she called the, the bathrooms on foot, like, you know, everything gets polished here, so we got some food, but it really likes the salt, you know? She said bathroom gone, my specification, I said, well, I suggest you go play imagine and then you're specifications, and she did.
And I, and I think, I think that we have kind of, uh, it's almost, uh, kind of a de facto city manager, and that's not her job description, but we, we agreed and even when we have our department head meeting, we've said to them, it comes through, the boss ran the office because we don't have any individual authorities and things like that. I think that somewhere in the, the job description, we need to spell out that, uh, that there's discipline things and all that, that is more, we need to hold more responsibility for that. If it, if she's, I might guess and say, uh, some kind of working man, things like that, or a motherfucker, takes, take that and we've got, we've got the letter taken or order, or back taken, this is okay. I, I think sometimes where people weren't made to do their job and then I think sometimes what's a little more than their job, so we, we try to make sure that we have the right, the right mindset.
So where would you add now? Is some time, do we, do we go and, if it wasn't to review the law or?
Well, I would...
I should use a part-time passive, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I thought she had another job, open bond. We had, I don't know about that, I don't know about that, I don't know about that.
If I were to leave with somebody here.
We should, we should have, I think we should have every time.
And, and my opinion, my opinion is way here than anyone else's, but my opinion is we first need to determine if we need the position and what we want to do and do that term. And, and I like that advice and I think it's a good thing, but we're, we're in agreement with this, we're gonna, this way, for, we can determine her name. Uh, and as I'm thinking of doing for the annual, then we're helping to dislodge the seat in the future, we're probably not, not be as easy because we violated our agreements. And, 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 you know, some of us are not here part-time, I, I miss meetings and I'm like, yeah, it's not, it's not like we all have to be here, but we are going to soon see another council, first we may wait till we have five, I, I don't know that, I, I didn't know that, I didn't know that there's gonna be more of here, hardly more, and, uh, before this last week, when we were preparing the book, I, I said, uh, uh, one evening, I think after a meeting coming, where are we on the day, she said, you know, I don't, two to five days, we were getting promoted about four or five, because most recognizes that there's more work going on. And, uh...
You referred to whatever.
Uh, we, plus, that's, that's right. So if she goes to forty hours and then we got close, then we start getting overtime and stuff like that, and it's a better, a better part-time position, and if you pay overtime, you'll hire a paid one position. And there's lots of things we need to, we need to think about, you know? What, what should I do? We're talking, we're talking many things over here, but, 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 uh, you're the ones here...
How much would you take off, I don't know, just two hours to, to like go to some job in your, or your...
Well, this week I had a doctor, we had a doctor call me, you know, and so I was off a couple of hours in, you know, but that's all this week, you know, now he's in the hospital, it was different, you know, but...
But you're not going all day long here.
I would go a couple hours, go a couple hours, but, um...
I, I found my note sheet on, there's a list of, of, she, she, I have some notes that talked to us about and, wait.
But, uh, you know, other than the, the work is harder than it used to be, you know? The, uh, you know, if I take a vacation, the office is closed that way, you know? I, I never take a week off, but, you know, I'm not good if we had somebody here, you know? But, uh, and that is the idea of somebody being here when I'm not, you know? There's a lot of people that comes and won't be able to look like that, you know? And in the, in the months that she's been here, probably a little bit earlier, you know, everything's been accounted for, there's nothing been missing, nothing out of, you know, out of your area. But also, if we had, you know, a decision, it was, it was, it was, I'm staying in, all the things, all, you know, that, you know, because they'll be...
Separation of...
Separation of leadership. Because there's no separation now. I, well, we, you know, every check that two city computers on, you know, any voice is worth that for, and y'all get a copy of the complete, like, and along with it, we, 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 we posit. But, you know, it's just, uh, it would be easier with somebody in the office and who is, that's up to y'all, you know, there's, you know, she is training, she is good with the people here in Wausau, and Wausau is a unique place, a unique people. You have to be able to, if you're not, you know, if you're not, you know, if you're not, you always be here, you know?
Maybe I need to know when you're lost and, uh, you don't know that, but I think is that she is very, like, if, and I personally, I don't know if it's from that, I tend to put it in, but sometimes it seems that she's here, but I don't know if she's good. I don't know if she's good, you know, she's back there and out here answering the phone, but, but I would have to be able to answer the phone and say, maybe more, I would be able to answer the phone and give up the city's work and, and, I need to talk to you, obviously, if I call in, because I'm here, you know?
And that's when I was with ninety-five percent of people, come for them.
But, you know, and that's...
And if she has a higher, it'll be, I'll shoot.
Well, then, if you're on the phone, it should be... Okay. Well, this is a table item, and, and you're, you may be thankful to put that, we didn't do that, we tried to make it work, we made as much as we could, but now, should we, should we put this on, on the, January, the half, and, and maybe we take this out? And do it that way, I, I, I'm not sure if that's what I do, for the second time, not, not you, me, you got some things to do. But Carter, you got any, any, you said, you said, you're, 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 you're something, you know?
I want to respect Biggs, but...
I, I was just saying, like, maybe, maybe, so, like, if it's, if it's, if it's...
Just like, don't, don't like to use the January, just like, have you been, have you given us, I don't know?
We need to, if it's on the table, we need to, 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 uh, the, uh, two thousand and eighteen, 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 and that's...
I haven't, I haven't, a, uh, email from Fred, office, statements, steps that have to go to me.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
I see how large we have a mess.
And this is just for information tonight, this will also be announced in either the January, we need to appoint this, uh, citizens task force and there's requirements for that. You know, uh, Mr. Fred, I've been here for these public hearings and all, for your housing workshop, um, this is, we qualify this year for the extra points, uh, which makes us more competitive with the CDVG cycle, and we need to figure out, you know, obviously, uh, we wanted a community bill, we could give a community bill, and firehouse, we need a firehouse for CDVG, we need to look at possibly a mini building through, through the CDVG, that will qualify, Mr. Fred, so that we would have a good chance for that. Uh, but, uh...
The community building will be a lower profile building and have to be finished down to the qualification for a firehouse and could be a whole purpose building.
So it got turned down to firehouse?
No, 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 that's separate funding.
It's a separate thing, yeah.
CDVG, we do not qualify for a firehouse under CDVG center because we go outside of city limits, like, we all be out low all the night, you know, by fire. We would have to, uh, have interim statements from every body that's in our fire district and that would raise us out of our quality level, the worst rates, and we look qualified as good.
So this is next one.
Yeah, to fire actually in January.
In January.
Yeah, we, now, we've, 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 we've,
We can give you, you know, maybe, what we, what we...
Write and make that, the senator later, ask them to take the surf and... Seven, ready.
Mrs. Palmer, anything tonight?
No.
Mr. Carter? Yours? Mr. Carter? Go back, Tyler, go back. Is, is we, if we work, if we work and prove ourselves and answer the questions that, uh, Mr. Carter thought, I, I think we started, uh, we didn't have time for it. And is everybody, is everybody clocking that?
Do you have an idea?
Do you just clock in in the morning and out in the afternoon?
Yeah.
Clock in and out at lunchtime?
With the greatest of what we're clocking in and out. We're all home, calm, calm, and all that, clocking in and out. It could, I don't think we're gonna be able to see some country's in there to my next appointment, and I'm clocking out. But it was all calm, calm, and all that, clocking out. And five hours, come off, you know, something like that, you know?
Does he give lunch hours?
He gets a lunch, he gets a lunch hour. We have our own pace of life.
And you, you need to go to see John, or you need to go and see... Change number or something like that. If you leave, clock out, and then you probably can come back in.
Yeah. Or we can lay a count, or it'll, we don't, we forget to clock out with the count.
Okay. Because I want to ask, we, uh, Alicia is, is not like that person, like, how do you account for... You mentioned, you know, she, you know, created a, a report she had and nothing in the name. How do you, we have a chance to afford another, or maybe I need to...
Really not.
Uh, do you keep a law about when you're working?
I do not, but I mean, I guess, good.
Yeah. We may, we may not be paying, but...
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, certainly, definitely, there's a lot more time than consumed for things, especially baseball season. Baseball season is twenty-four hours. I'm constantly texting this college and precious parents.
January through May, you remember, that was great, yeah?
Yeah. Well, I thought you said, yeah.
What do you expect, you know?
Yeah. There's not any other sports that we have going on other than baseball at this time, but, I mean, I do try to do things with community, like, um, we, what we did the year before, we fished over the summer with some kids and, you know, the little ball hall and the pay ride. I think last year we did Christmas caroling, but this year it's just the pay rides.
So, uh, okay, I'm, I'm sure the truth.
I, I, I try. I promise, yeah.
We won't be standing to the length of shit, you know, but, uh, again, my, my concern overall is, uh, is perfect community. And this, it's not just me, I think we're seeing this all. Uh, so what if, what if she took, uh, just took the time, you know, walking to that night shift, because, you know, it was in the first, my heart, my head. If we gave you a chance, you know, any day to do something, and you can just, maybe like that, a couple of hours, or just like being concerned, you know, once a month, would that be something that would...
I can try, but like, like Margaret, I mean, Margaret's amazing, because I text her on Saturdays and Sundays, and she answers. And so I know she was waiting, loving to be all her hours, you know? So, I mean, I can definitely, I'll try, but it is hard to do it, because like you said, I do, when I get home from work, I'm like, you know, staying in the job, but pays my bills. I, you know, get home and I give my book, uh, try to figure out, you know, what can I, what's coming up? What can I do to be involved in this holiday or this, you know?
What are these people, what?
Yeah.
My other time, I like, sometimes monthly, hopefully, I'll be easy, maybe...
I'll play some button.
Monthly.
And you get some, there's no phone call, or text.
But I said that, that's a good word, if you know, I, I would agree, that's sometimes as well. I don't, most have to do it sometime, but in four weeks, I don't even have to, see every time, we're, not, we might not manage to, right? But monthly, four, sometime, and like, we still want more. And then, I, I, we, we talked about that, when we need to... I said, we could first go here from anybody, uh, because she, or let her, or say Jim, but, uh, because she does have to wait on, 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 and when she goes, she gives a bang, you know, and clock out, and, 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 I don't want this to be, I just trust me, I don't want this to be easy to follow, and it doesn't, it doesn't, come up from time to time, and bad, and, 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 and.
So basically, just like a monthly paragraph or something, what I'm working on, or what I'm doing, or...
Let's try.
Okay. So not necessarily the time of part or law or whatever, just...
There's several matches we've done, called, or still called.
Twenty-four. That was, I mean, right there. You guys have, you have, you put a sample out, and how long, and that's what it was? If you see my government, you can take a good look.
Can I just warn them? Is that all? And... How did that happen? Come, 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 come. They were getting help, they were doing what they did, man. I'm sure it's hard, I would do it now. I have to, I don't, we do, we have, we have, we have, we have, we have, anytime, we have, we probably get, and that happens, I probably need some time to capture the insurance.
So, to those of you who may not be in the here, I don't have time for it. Ms. Carter's question was, uh, about how Martin makes, uh, comp time and his meeting class latest and handling it. But she's done a lot of things, and, and I don't think, what, her, being a part of the community stuff, when she does Sunday parades, Christmas parades, and things like that, uh, she might feel that that's her contribution, but I think that we must, so it's kind of that, just her representing the city and getting it open, and keeping it, you know, just keep it organized and like that. So she doesn't charge comp time for that, so that was the question, how she make comp time, but she works these meetings, and, uh, I can have, work all day, and then she, uh, if any Saturday, Sunday nights, or whatever the dispatch calls, and that, or, she has to go out, uh, and, so that's, that's how she would comp time. Do you keep running a law with that?
I do.
Why don't you, why don't you put that in there, just some time, and just, you know, if you got thirty-four hours of comp time, you might, you just take, take it out, or...
I am not going to charge the city two hours for coming from my house, out here to notarize paper for somebody that's gotta have it on Saturday or something.
I know you may...
I come out here and open the town hall door, across the palace door, for somebody in the meeting, and it's, it's, I can stay, I can, I can, now, if it's his time, I'll make sure it does, but it's, I can stay.
I have a bit of a shinner me out.
But, okay, come out the crossing palace or the town hall door and expect two hours for it, I can do it too.
No.
That'd be too good to me, so, I can't do it.
I've been, I've been, in five years, and I'm never charged.
I have it, that's, I think, I know, the next thing, I know, too.
And of course, that mostly, uh, I know that it's to be best for her, and then we get time, and you'll tell us some things about that. Okay, uh...
That's the only thing you had, bro?
Yes, ma'am, I have to, I have to.
No, you're, I, I can't hear you out, but I heard you say you had a question for me.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
But figure out, it's a little long.
Just, okay. Uh...
Not your longest. Okay.
On our Christmas, uh, bonuses for employees, uh, we have tried to do something every year for employees. Uh, we do have some in the budget, and, uh, our budget issue is not, uh, significantly increasing our revenue, so I recommend we do the employee raises, uh, uh, bonuses for Christmas is the same as last year, which is super knowledge for employees. And, uh, we do need a motion on that.
Oh, motion.
Our motions are second.
Second.
Our motion is second, and discussion on the motion. How you vote, Carter?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Chair, votes yes. Okay, uh, tell us, I, I know that the town council position is the neutral thing, and so we put up, we said, we, okay, we, we're gonna have a splash pad and...
We be, we sent out a big request for our splash pad installation. We got splash pad here, uh, and the nature trail. We got one contract for the city to be in on the boat. We're gonna get the whole shebang from out later on, but our total grant is fifty thousand dollars, and we gotta do a lot of stuff in that fifty thousand dollars besides that, um, splash pad park and the nature trail. I think the splash pad park, we had a hundred and ninety-two thousand. And the, the nature trail was a hundred and thirty-two thousand, so my recommendations are to reject all bids and wait on kids to see if we can, if find us a contractor or, or do it with inmate labor, which may have to make the cash.
So we got a hundred thousand dollars, and we got, uh, three hundred and...
Everybody also, shout the change, we're making trail for it.
Well, you're the emotional...
We, we, we have a motion to reject all...
Yes, I'll make the motion.
We have a motions are second.
Second.
And discussion on the motion. How you vote, Carter?
Yes.
Ball?
Yes.
Chair, votes yes. Okay, let me mention, just, uh, one other thing, too, is I don't know if you're just getting emails, or if you're getting something, maybe from Margaret, but the legislature's fiction to, uh, community that are already in the meeting, doing all those kinds of things, uh, so probably the cities are sending out a lot of notices now. If you, if you're not on their email, if you do email, you're on their list, uh, I would, I would recommend maybe that you get that, that while some, you may go days and days at times, that you just believe, believe, and they, a lot of, uh, a lot of meetings and a lot of banquets and things like that, but, uh, there's a couple of things that's, moving now, you know, with the legislature, annual constitutional revision committee, and one of them is, uh, unfunded mandates, and the other is netback on, on home rooms. And we had that come up a little bit last year, with a bill that was going to keep us from being able to, uh, and we don't have any, but, but we would make that decision here, uh, like, um, business licenses and some things like that, uh, we need to, we need to oppose anything that takes away our opportunities to, to operate in our jurisdiction. We all know our special, our community here, all, I think we know our special community. We all make decisions locally, and, uh, and, uh, one size don't fit all, and one night working, well, and, oh, might, might be something to work in Warsaw. So I, I heard you, uh, I've written some letters to our representative, Senator, and, uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I, I think, if we got the idea, we would invite them to come and be with us sometime, and maybe let the community come out, and, uh, we might even have a cake, and talking, Hopkins might not, you know? Except the one here, we eat all the time, but, uh, anyway, I definitely mention that thing. That thing, let me, let me go to, uh, maybe, is, uh, is there anyone that's special, Carter? I'm sorry, I'll come back. I should go, but even when it into positions, and then we're coming back.
No, no reports.
No reports, no, okay. We, we... And one, each of you. Our charter says that the, in the event of vacancy on council, that the, uh, that the chairman of the, the mayor will make an appointment for that, uh, of that person to fill that vacancy. We, uh, met last month, and I asked for your input, uh, and you made some recommendations, uh, your name, and things like that, and we contacted those names. I would just feel good watching having that package, if it's all out, you will know how we did this. Uh, all candidates, and, and I, I, sometimes, if you see that, if you reported into, into what, what I'm personally doing, and, and I asked, and my job, uh, you will recognize that, I think, I read the sources, I don't think that's, not the way I should do it, but all, all candidates came with interview, properly dressed, all presented themselves well, and seemed comfortable with the process. Some seemed more relaxed and more a part of the interview, as their personality might dictate. I was pleased with the candidates, and think that any one of them would be easy to work with, and think that each had a genuine interest in the town of Warsaw and in serving. I put the written portion, we discussed the questions, we sure that they were understood. Finally, I gave each candidate an opportunity to ask many questions. The intent of our interview was to determine the familiarity of each person, had a local government department responsibility for that department responsibility of the town of, and how accurate they had been in the town's government. Candidates all had sufficient length of history with the town. Those names that were suggested to me are whom themselves had expressed an interest in serving, one withdrew, uh, number seven, I don't know if I mean, the right, uh, programs there, and, and one did not come for an interview. The second page that you have there is the, is the questions yesterday on the opponent and, uh, that I would ask. The third is repetition of that, and that's the format that they hand, I handed to them, and I gave them a space there to write their answers, and then they could also, uh, they could also turn them to back or, or discuss with them later. So that's, that's the format that's given to them. The next thing you have is the answer sheet. Lots of questions did not have an answer that is either right or wrong, or, or something like that. If I ask you what you think, and you tell me what you think, that's not a wrong answer. If you're not thinking what I want you to think, my job is to, is to try to persuade you, we do that way. If I ask what you think, and you give me any answer, that's not a wrong answer, that's what you think, and that's what I ask you for. Anyway, uh, the questions were, what do you, what do you want to serve? And the answers to vary, but I was wanting somebody to tell me they would be involved with the drug of the town, the interests of future of town's children, or often solutions for our problems. What do you see the issues that need to be addressed? Again, they may vary, but I want to think about, think about bringing our ordinances up to date, code enforcement, street prepared, and names. I would address these, and I said, be specific. I was disappointed that most of them didn't be specific, but, uh, I'm not just looking for more than, uh, than they thought that I was. But answers might include things like attend workshops, go to municipalities, and county wishers, to see if their problems, to solutions, uh, see if their solutions have already been agreed, research the issue, propose ideas, plan and attend meetings with our legislative litigation, chamber commerce, or other entities that might hate. How many town council meetings have you been to in the past five years? The answers may vary, but I would thank anybody who's been struggling in council, where you go this much a year, or a million, a billion. Uh, if you haven't attended, why? The answers may vary, but, uh, but should not include something to the fact, I never have been interested before, or I didn't have time. You can't go from not being interested to sitting in the council overnight. And if you don't have time to attend meetings, where you have time to serve. What are the two parts of a budget? Revenue and expenditure, and, and what does it mean balancing budget as a cost? It means taking the amount of revenue available to the town, which is expenditure, needing to operate the town, or what mine, or both parts are the same, if you need to retain revenue and revenues, and there has to be a way to raise revenue for decreasing expenditure, putting costs, putting burden, two ways to do that. What does it offer to give the town the proper use of funds and properties of the town, ensures that millions have been properly allocated and expended, and ensure the financial stability of the town? It checks to make sure that the town policies have been qualified regardless of grants, programs, or town costs. What's the purpose of the sunshine law? The sunshine law was placed to promote open government. Town council members are bound by a provision that this law that makes all decisions of the council have to be made in a meeting that is open to all the public, and helps ensure that the public has the opportunity to hear any discussion of issues the council will be voting on. What is the document called and serves as a kind of constitution for the town, it's called the P R. What is comprehensive planning meaning, and what does it do for the town? Comprehensive planning means planning for the future use of land and how to provide infrastructure and services as the town grows. It includes placing land use restrictions on property, so it is utilized to the highest possible purpose. The Washington County Pen and Commission does the planning for the town of Warsaw by an interlippable agreement, and would contribute to that, uh, to that cost. Who's county commission district includes Warsaw? Uh, I got some of this, of this half right, and some of it, uh, let me have my learned suit, I got a number, it's just a person that I was looking for. Uh, who's county commission district includes Warsaw? Mr. Allen Bush, District one, Mr. Steve Homer, District five, Warsaw, that's, uh, divided by district lines, and the county commission, and we have two commissions that serve our county. Uh, how long have you been registered to live in Warsaw? Answers may vary, but what I was looking for, there was a long history of residency and involvement. The next thing that you have is the score sheet. And the way I did that, there was four, there was four, four persons. I looked at all the answers I got, laying them side to side, and looking at all the answers, and, uh, and I decided which answer was the best, and after that, which was the best answer, and after that, which, and after that, we did the last decision. There were four answers, and they were best, one, two, three, four. The best one got four points, the next best one got three points, two points, and one more. And then down to bottom, you see how the, the total, uh, I was really surprised how the, the couple of them come close, and there's a gap, and then a couple of them come close. I think that we had, I think it was good, the numbers of people that we had, that went to serve, uh, I was probably pleasantly surprised in the, in the interview process. All of you answered very well. Uh, I, I think maybe I learned one thing here, that you were communicating with me better than when you were talking to me, than when you were writing, and, and that was you. And I made some notes about some of you writing both, I might have noticed, and I made a note, because you're written, and your answer might not have been, when we talked about you, maybe not better. On a ranking process, so that this would be as blind as it could be, I did not enter into this with a, with a favor. But with the ranking process, you see the scores there, is Shirley Rittenberg's score the highest on points, and, uh, if I, if I, if I do this, what I think is fairweight, then I, then I would recommend that we, uh, and, and the council has to, you have to, what's that word?
Concur.
Concur, so you have to, uh, with this. So, uh, I would recommend to, for Shirley Rittenberg to the town council, and that she take off to January, at, at our next meeting. That's my recommendation.
Could you repeat that name again, please?
Shirley Rittenberg, R I G H T E N B U R G. And, and because the charter does, and, and it's not a bad thing, we, we've had a number of points, uh, uh, I believe both Mr. Wood and Mrs. Wood, Iced while they were in office. I know that way back, uh, I know that way back, um, I'm not just guessing, but we had one, another way back, Iced in office, uh, Jewel Rogers, Iced in office, and most recently, Mr. Carter, and earlier this year, this is probably a very unprecedented thing, though, Janine did not take in our seats, she hadn't elected, we actually lost two council persons in, in less than a year. The informant, the informant process, it might, when we look at the charter, and, and that's when the thing, Mr. Carter's do it, if the council wants that change, and the people vote on that, it will be done another way, but, but because our charter now says, the mayor makes a informant, that's, uh, and that you concurrent. Now, I suppose if there's not a concurrence, I have to go back and make another one. We actually did that once before, which I thought, I, I made a recommendation when, uh, somebody, if the council made a resound, or made a nice, at that time, oh, Mr. Wilson Shepard was originally in the 12, Mr. Carter was in the 12, uh, Mr. Collins has been in the 12, I asked him, I've been in the 12 twice, for Mr. or Mrs. Carter.